Okay, welcome. This is going to be the Kingsburg City Council regular meeting for March 5th, 2025. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Pastor Ricky Chambers, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please stand?
All right, thanks for having me. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for today, and we thank you for this rain, and we ask that you'd bring more of it and fill our mountains with a great snowpack to just bring great life and abundance to this valley. We ask that your Spirit of love and joy and peace rest upon us here and now and throughout our city. I thank you, Lord, for the leaders that you've appointed over us that are represented in this room. I ask that you would bless them in their decision-making, give them wisdom in their oversight in what they do. I ask that you would bless them and their families, that you prosper them, protect them from evil, bring unity to them, and give them your peace that surpasses understanding. So we ask for your leading tonight and in this community. Give our leaders foresight for what is to come. And I just pray over the agenda set before them today. May the plans and decisions bring blessing and prosperity to our community as we work for the betterment of it together. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. We will call tonight's meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
President?
Here.
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 Here. First item on our agenda is to approve the agenda. We'll entertain motions for that.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Under presentations and informational reports tonight, we have none, so we will move right into public comment. This provides an opportunity for members of the public to address the City Council on items of interest to the public within the council's jurisdiction and which are not already on the agenda this evening. It is the policy of the council not to answer any questions impromptu. Speakers should limit their comments to not more than three minutes. For items which are on the agenda this evening, members of the public will be provided an opportunity to address the council as each item is brought up for discussion. Public comment is now open. Do we have any members from the public that would like to speak? Go ahead and come on up. We ask everyone, as they come up to speak, if you could just state your name and whether or not you're a resident of Kingsburg.
All right, very good. My name is Larry King. I'm not a resident of Kingsburg. And the item I'd like to talk about is also not in the city of Kingsburg, but it's in the sphere of influence. And so what I wanted to do is, I know a month ago, you guys had a possible allocation opening for 11 lots that were still available. And so I watched the YouTube video and got some information. Holly told me, hey, watch it, see what happened. And I just saw confusion and a misunderstanding that I think on a lot of stuff. I have the same kind of thing, trying to understand it. And so I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of background. I was hoping that those would be opened up so we can kind of move things forward. September, I guess, we'll come back in September looking for some allocations. But on our project, we're pretty far along. I mean, here's, you know, here's like a third iteration of a drawing, okay? And with that, I'd also just kind of go give you a little bit of history, you know, because in 2006 is when I purchased the property. It's only 10 acres. Of course, we had the crash in 2008, right? So not much happened with real estate. 2018, 2019, started trying to move it forward. 10 acres, by the way, is not really a viable size parcel for, you know, subdivision. So that didn't really go much further. So I kind of shifted gears in 2020, 2021, looking at, you know, switching it over into like two acre parcels, because it is in the county. And it does look like all the neighbors right there that are one, you know, two acres seemed kind of reasonable to me. But being in the sphere of influence, City of Kingsburg showed up and said, hey, we don't want to do that. It's in our sphere of influence. We want to sub, we want to get subdivisions. We want lots out of that. So, okay. So we shifted gears again, and we did get a viable product with Rick Schul being a realtor, San Joaquin Valley Homes, you know, being a builder, both very solid players. And so now we've got, in the meantime, talking with two or three of the neighbors that have parcel size. Now we've got 28 acres. Now it's a viable project. And so I just want to let you guys know that the non-allocation does stop us from moving forward, because there are some parallel paths that could be run as opposed to the lineal, and have made contact with, you know, CID, with voter registration, Fresno County, LAFCO, you know, everything. But again, it's, you know, we're trying to go a parallel path at this point, and now we're stuck waiting. So I just want to put that out there. You know, 2006, young man, 2008 crash, told my brother we got plenty of time. 20, you know, 22, 23, I retired, start another business, COVID kind of held up. But today I stand here, and I'm hoping that I don't apply for social security before we get this project through. So that's where I'm at today. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And looking forward to maybe having some conversations, you know, with David, a little more detail, because I know he was saying, hey, I think I heard something about that over there, but just to give them the information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other members from the public that would like to address council? Okay, seeing none, we will close public comment and move on to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and include a recommendation from staff and shall be acted on in one motion by the council. If a council member requests additional information or would like to pull an item for discussion, that item shall be pulled from the consent calendar and acted upon separately. A motion to approve the consent calendar is deemed to include a motion to waive the full reading of any ordinance or resolution on the consent calendar. For tonight, on the consent calendar, we have items one through five. Do we have any members of council that would like to pull any of the consent calendar items? No. Do we have any members from the public or any members from staff that would like to pull any of the consent items? Okay, seeing none pulled, we will entertain motions for consent calendar.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Now we'll move on to our regular calendar. Item number six, the 24, 25 capital improvement update and fiscal year 26 introduction. Staff report by City Manager Alex Henderson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As the calendar turns over to a new year each year, we start pretty quickly on working on the next fiscal year budget. So staff has been engaged in that. And as part of that, including this evening and over the next several meetings that we'll have, there'll be individual presentations for the council and for the public regarding different portions of the budget, talking about, you know, our ongoing revenue updates, CalPERS impacts, and different things that will impact our decision-making and ultimately recommendations for the council to consider for the fiscal year 2026 budget. And so tonight is a little bit of an introduction to that. It also includes status updates with regards to our capital improvement projects for fiscal year 2025. And so I'm going to start with that and then give a little bit of an introduction to the process that we go through for developing the capital improvement budget for future years. So included in your packet this evening is a status update worksheet spreadsheet that includes all of the council adopted capital improvement projects, which are those projects usually defined by a one-time project over $5,000 that were approved by the council as part of the fiscal year 2025 budget. I'm just going to highlight a few of them. I won't go through them all, but certainly if there are individual items that the council wishes to discuss or receive updates on, myself or staff are happy to go through those as well. So recently, we discussed approving a contract for the space needs assessment, looking at the potential for a new city hall. So that is in progress as the contract has been awarded. We continue, we have an ongoing grant program for our facade alley improvements. We've had three applications through this fiscal year and are examining another one currently. So we continue to see good participation in that program. And, you know, we've had that for probably eight or nine years now. And there's most of the buildings downtown that have been redone have probably taken advantage of that. So I think you can, you know, if you, it's really provided a lot of private investment along with, you know, some, much more than the public investment. So a good return on investment there. Our forgivable loan program, so the Gold Standard Mortgage Project, AJ filed today. So we can, that has been a long time coming. So it's a very, very pleased about that. But they were awarded Forgivable Loan Fund. So Mike has been working closely with them to draft those documents so that we can bring that to fruition as well, now that that project has been completed. We're in year two of our general plan update, which obviously the Planning Commission and the council have been a part of over the last couple of years. Most of our street project work was done. We do those in the summer. So that work was completed in July and August of last year. So 15th, 16th, and 17th Avenue, as well as our Drager Street project and waterline improvements were completed last summer. And so we're in the process right now of Dave's office is putting together design costs for this summer, which will be the next fiscal year and will be something that the council considers as part of the proposed capital improvements project for the upcoming year. Our fire engine replacement, so we ordered that a couple of years ago now. It's being funded through several different avenues. Chief Roberts and a couple of folks are going out here, I think later this month, to inspect that. And then we are anticipating delivery in April, assuming all goes well. So we're getting, we're getting close as well on that. Council approved the parks master plan update a few meetings ago. So Adam is working closely with a consultant on that currently. So the next step for that will be to put out a community survey to get input for that. He's also working on new signage for basically all of our parks. So having uniformed signage, we've been waiting for some of the new developments, parks to be complete, and those are rounding the corner. So I think there's 12, 12 new signs, including existing parks and new parks that Adam and Daniel have been working on and will be here shortly. The police department went live with their body worn cameras and dash cameras this fiscal year. It was year two of a full of that build out. It's part of Measure E. There's been a number of public works projects, including cleanup at our, what's known as our float barn, as well as several water enterprise projects, including ongoing residential conversions for turf replacement intended to conserve water, as well as our water rate study, which we're currently in the middle of right now. We have sort of ongoing hydrant replacements where either they're damaged by vehicle accidents, or they've been identified as, you know, unable to be repaired. And so those get replaced. Water, the water department completes those, but that's obviously in conjunction with the fire department as well, as they help identify those needed areas. So again, not a, an all-inclusive discussion. I'm happy to answer any questions. And then if there are no questions, then I will kind of go over the process for how we develop each year.
Thank you. Council discussion? Or questions? No? Okay, we'll open up to the public. Do we have any members of the public that have any questions or comments on this? Okay, we'll bring it back to councils. Are there any final thoughts, questions, or...
I have a question on capital projects. Mailer at Warkentine, 14th to 10th, construction project involves constructing alley improvements. Do we have, have we put a bid out for that yet?
Hi, Dave Peters, engineer. No, we're working on the design. That'll be bid towards the beginning of next month, with work to be done in the summer.
Okay, and that is for the whole alley? Both?
Yeah, the alley between Mailer and Warkentine, between 14th and 10th. So those, that's the boundary.
Yeah, it's a pretty good sized alley.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Glad to hear that.
Any else?
No, it's it.
Okay, this is informational only, so we will close that item and move on to item seven, city engineers update, brought by city engineer Dave Peters.
Evening, mayor, members of council. Just to highlight a few projects that our office is working on. One of them we just talked about. Smith Street Parking Lot is finally moving forward. So that's the parking lot behind Model Drug. That was, that was kind of the last, one of the last downtown parking lots that hasn't been rehabbed in a long time. We, we're partnering with FRCTA, who got a grant to install a bunch of canopies and solar panels and charging stations in that lot. So we're partnering with them. We're going to redo the whole lot, repave it, redo the trash closure. So similar to the other downtown lots that were done a couple of years ago. And then FRCTA will come, come in and put all of their solar stuff on top of the finished lot. So that's been kind of something we've been working on for a while, but it's finally, finally moving forward. We expect to start design on that in, in, in May. The Laurel Dog Park is really close to being finished. We're just in the plant establishment and the maintenance period. You can see the grass is starting to come up. We're just kind of need some, some warmer days to get all of the, all of the grass to germinate, and they'll get a couple of mows on it, and we'll be able to, to open it up. Senior Center Kitchen also is very close to being done. We had a county inspection last week. They pointed out a couple more things that need to be taken care of. So that's, that's being handled now, and we're hoping to get a reinspection on that next week. Some new projects that were, that are in design right now, that will be constructed this summer, extending a roadway into the parcel north of the business park, the Matoyan Parcel, and utilities into that area so they can be accessed and developed in the future. The alley projects that we just talked about, Mailer, Mailer at Warkentine, between 14th and 10th, and, and the alley between 20th and 21st, between Sierra and Mariposa, both of those long alleys federally funded projects to improve air quality. So those are, those are long developing projects because of the funding source, but we're finally completing the, the design phase and getting ready to build those this summer. And then our streets projects, we have several streets in the southeast, southeast area, northeast area, and then two of our more heavily traveled collector streets, Stroud and Tillery Street. Those are all currently being designed. And then we'll bid those, and then the, the funding to construct those will be in next year's budget. So we'll be able to, to do the work this summer. On development projects, the Kings Estates, which is the West Star Development way on the north side of town, the Phase Four is winding down. The park is finally finished for that whole area. It's, I think it came out really nice, the pickleball courts and a nice picnic area and some play structures. And we're working with them to kind of move forward the next phase. It's got to go through annexation, some other things, but that's directly across 18th on the west side of 18th. It's another, another subdivision that they'll be, they'll be beginning. I think they want to start this summer construction. The El Portillo project in the business park is really close to being done. That's the Western, Western Ware Warehouse. And I think there's also like a little showroom where they're going to sell some stuff. So that's, that's nearing completion. The Colster Truck Center out on Cam, near 99, that's finally started. They started some earthwork on it this week. So that's a, it's like a dispatch and, and truck operations facility that's under construction. And then this is another longer developing project, but there's a senior housing project on 10th Avenue, just north of the Ace Hardware, that we've been working with actually Tillery County Housing Authority and their team on for, for a while. That looks like it's starting to, starting to get some traction and move forward. So we expect to see something on that soon. And then the, we are also in the midst of submitting the, the CMAC and STBG transportation funding grant applications for the next cycle. So that was on your agenda last, last meeting. We submitted the, the STBG ones earlier this week. CMAC are done in a couple of weeks. So CMAC's air quality, STBG's like the general maintenance ones. So, and then you might have seen in Alex's update last week, we got the, the Highway Safety Improvement Program funding to improve 10th and Kern. So that was the one we talked about a while ago, submitted the application. We were successful. So I'll give you an update on that at the next meeting. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks. Council questions?
On 10th and Kern?
Yeah.
I can't remember what we ended up going with.
Yeah, I'm going to bring it to you with pictures and everything next time. But we, we had a few different options. I think one of them we were hoping would be the, the preferred alternative would be a traffic signal, but it didn't meet any of the warrants. So we, we wouldn't have been able to install that and without taking on a tremendous amount of liability. So, so the, the other option was realigning the curbs on the east side so that the road isn't so, so, so wide. And there were some other improvements like rapid flashing beacons and I think speed advisory signs and those sorts of things. So I'll bring it back to you next meeting, give you the whole refresher.
The Soho Apartments, where is that at?
That is on 10th Avenue between Stroud and Cam on the west side. So it's just north of, I'm not sure what the apartment complex is, but it's the...
The 901 Harold.
Sorry?
901 Harold.
Yeah. So they're...
Whatever they call it now.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's, I think it's a 35 unit apartment complex. It's another slower developing project.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, present.
I have a question on, I think it's going to be a Chevron gas station over on Rayford, near to Rayford Johnson by, by Dollar Tree?
Yeah.
What's going on with that construction?
Yeah, so they, they began some work, and then there hasn't been any activity out there in a while. I know that they were, they came back to our building and planning department. We're talking about adding some square footage to the building and adjusting the, the, the site a little bit. So I think they're, they're working through that.
Okay.
Yeah.
If I can. They have some challenges also with PG&E right now. So Daniel is attempting to work with our, our government rep to try and focus in on that with PG&E to help move that along.
Okay, and then the outgoing office, I see they're preparing an improvement plan.
Yeah, so we, we received the first submittal for their grading and site improvement plan. So essentially, you know, everything but the building. And we did a plan check on those and turned those back over to them. And they're working on making revisions and resubmitting to our office. And I, I don't know, they, they may have already, they may have submitted building plans as well. I'm not sure about that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any members from the public have any questions, comments? Mr. Peters? Okay, seeing none, any final thoughts from council? Questions? Okay, if not, this is informational only, and we will move on to item number eight, which is the Measure E extension discussion. Staff report by City Manager Alexandra Henderson.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, purpose of this discussion this evening is to introduce and kick off the topic of a potential Measure E 1% public safety tax extension. So some background, on June 5th, 2018, Kingsburg voters enacted Measure E, a 1% public safety sales tax that supports ongoing allowed efforts. The measure passed after receiving 72% support. As outlined in ordinance number 2018-002, which is included in your packet, it went into effect on October 1, 2018, for a period of 10 years. Unless it is extended, Measure E will expire on September 30th, 2028. This is considered a transaction and use tax, which are allocated to jurisdiction where tax products is received or registered, which is the case of a motor vehicle purchase. And because of this, Measure E revenue collections are higher than the 1% local jurisdiction place of sale or use. So for example, if a consumer purchases a new motor vehicle and registers it in Kingsburg where they live, the city receives the 1% sales tax for that vehicle for the purposes of Measure E. That's the same theory that occurs with online-based purchases where we get the full 1%. Initially, conservative, conservative estimates forecasted that Measure E would generate roughly $1 million annually. Fortunately, receipts have exceeded those estimates by more than double since the first full year of inception. For fiscal year 25, revenues are projected to be approximately $2.6 million. And since the measure went into effect, the city has received over $14 million to date. The impact of Measure E has had on both of our departments is significant. And consistent with the measure's initial intent, Measure E revenue has been used solely for activities related to public safety. I've included in the staff report a non-exhaustive list of examples of expenditures to illustrate the use of funding and the importance to both police and fire. So there's a number of equipment updates there, but then also perhaps more significantly, a number of personnel for both departments. So given the importance of the measure, staff believes it's appropriate to begin discussing the renewal effort, which could be placed on the following future ballots, which includes June 2, 2026, is the California primary. November 3, 2026 is the US midterm election, and then March 7, 2028 is the presidential primary election. Each of these dates carries specific deadlines with regards to filing in order to qualify for the respective ballot. The Finance Committee discussed this item on February 24, 2025, and recommended continuing this discussion with the council. The Finance Committee did make the following recommendations. They had a preferred election date of June 2, 2026. We did clarify today, there are some rules with regards to general elections. So general tax ballot measures can only go on the same ballot as a city council election. So they would have to be at a November election. But because our tax is a special tax, which requires two-thirds vote, it can go on the primary election, which is what we did in 2018, and remains the case in this situation. Finance Committee also directed staff to get quotes for both legal and marketing and education consultants to assist in the effort. We have received some quotes for, for legal, which is really the first step to help, help us identify the timeline moving forward. The Finance Committee also asked for input from the existing Measure E Oversight Committee, just to get their feedback on how they viewed the process since inception, their input, and, you know, confirming that all, all funds have been spent as intended. Provided input on the renewal guidelines, including keeping some form of a sunset clause. And then also asked both chiefs to be prepared to discuss the impacts to both departments if the measure is ultimately not extended. For the items that we are looking at to seek from a legal firm include establishing a timeline, drafting of the measure, including the resolution and placing on the ballot, preparing an impartial analysis for the city attorney to review and sign, establishing dates and creating forms for primary and rebuttal arguments, to review information materials to ensure there is no advocacy on the city's part once the, once the measure is placed on the ballot, and also be available for questions from, from staff and council related to the election process. So again, the purpose this evening is to seek additional counsel and community input that will help staff establish a team that will assist with the renewal effort. This will allow for establishment of a timeline for deliverables, community input and education, as well as establishing a budget that will coincide with the fiscal year 2026 budget adoption. So that concludes my report this evening, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions and appreciate any comment the council and community may have.
Thank you. We will start with council discussion on this.
I have a couple of questions for Alex.
Perfect.
So originally, it cost us $10,000 for the county clerk's office, and now it's going to be more than double?
That's, that's what they, the county has indicated to us, yes. And they said that that's somewhat dependent upon the number of other entities on the ballot and the length of our measure. But that's, that's what they've been, that's what they've told us initially, yes.
Okay, second question, because I don't know the answer to this. If we have, we have 10 years, and so really 2028 is when it's up. If we go for June 2026, and say there is a sunset, does it start over as soon as that's approved? Or can we say it starts, like the new 10 years or 30 years starts on 2028 when the first one would have sunset? Does that make sense?
It does. We'll clarify with, with legal counsel at the time, but I think the way where we would write it, both the resolution and the ballot language would be to extend it from the end of when the last one would have. So essentially, it would, the extension would occur, you know, on, on October 1, 2028.
Thank you.
Other council discussion? Other council discussion?
No, we, we talked about it quite a bit at the, uh, Finance Committee meeting. And I think the reason that we were leaning towards that twenty twenty-six is it gives us more opportunities in case there's some issues. And that's gonna put staff on a little bit more of a deadline. And that's gonna put a little bit more work on our members of public safety. Um, 'cause there is a point in this where we have to legally kind of tap out of this, and we can't endorse it any longer. And that date's gonna come sooner with this date. So, um, we're not allowed to, at a certain point, talk about how much we are supportive of this. Hundred percent supportive of this, we're not allowed to say that. So, um, we'll need to kind of put it in your hands too. So, if we do work towards that date, I just wanted to give, um, Lieutenant and Chief some of that, some of that information so that we're all aware of it. Now, do we have any other council questions?
No, I'd like to say that I think this Measure E is, you know, so important because for equipment, for police and fire, and for personnel, you know, and for their wages and stuff. So, hopefully the citizens, you know, see it the way we do and will vote it back in. 'Cause, you know, we, we do have a fairly safe city, I believe. Very safe city, in my opinion.
Stacy and I were, um, on council when we first started discussing this, the first go-around. And we had many different discussions about how to do this. I mean, it was probably a year of discussions at least figuring out the right way, um, what was right for Kingsburg. And at that point, um, we did a sunset because we said, this is new. We want, we were worried about, honestly, we were worried about future councils. And if we wanted it to be done well and to, um, earn the public's respect in how we, um, were fiscally responsible with the money that they entrusted us with. And so, that's why we did the ten-year sunset. In moving forward, I am concerned about having another sunset that would be ten years. I would like to talk about making it, if we had one, longer, because I think we've proven to the public that we've been very responsible. And now, we have personnel wrapped into it. And I think that it makes it very difficult if we keep having to go for ten years to really plan well as a city and to put more salaries into that. And then, I mean, what we'd be facing right now if it doesn't pass, I mean, that's why we would have two option, or two chances if we did twenty twenty-six and then twenty twenty-eight. Because we have personnel wrapped into it, we would be, we'd have to have other options. We, we couldn't afford to continue in the way that we're now, like, fully staffed. And that was our goal originally. And so, moving forward in this, I would be in favor of the June, um, second. But I'd like to really discuss more about it not being a ten-year sunset. Um, maybe no sunset, or maybe looking at, um, when I was talking to Alex about it, usually it's a ten-year or a thirty-year. Um, so, I would like to look at a longer sunset so that we can plan more, um, with our, um, our departments. And, I mean, there have been other things that have come up that we might wanna do in the future that we are like, we can't, we can't do these other things because we can't chance losing Measure E. Um, the other thought that I've kind of been contemplating before this meeting is, we've done amazing things. When you look at this list of, like, together with our community, the things that we've been able to do to make sure we live in a safe community and that our departments have what they need to do their job well. Um, I don't know that the public knows this. So, I think that we need to make sure in our advertising, our social media, everything that we post, everything that goes out, that we are saying, this was made possible by Measure E. Because what we're telling the public is, this was made possible by you, 'cause this was your money, and this is what we did with it. I know that we have stickers on many of our vehicles, but, like, you only see that if you're right by one of those vehicles. But, um, moving forward into putting this on a ballot, I think that that should be a priority where, and not just when it's gonna sunset, but always that we are showing the public what we're doing. So, some of my thoughts.
Thank you.
No, I, I agree. I, I would like to do it on June, um, June second, right? Is that the date? I, I think going in the primary would be a good idea. And I would agree. I think we need a longer sunset. It just seems like we passed this, you know, I mean, just a few years ago. And now, we're having to gear up again. I, I would be in favor of thirty years. Uh, I think it would be harder to pass, um, without a sunset. I, I don't know that one might be harder to get the support from the public. Um, yeah, that would be, that would be my biggest concern. I don't know that we'd have the support. That would be, you know. Um, and thirty years would give plenty of time for planning and, I don't want it feel like we were, um, working on, working in that direction again, so.
I completely agree with everyone here. Um, and kudos to previous councils for setting it up the way that they did, because it does give the opportunity to prove that the city and staff have been good stewards of those tax dollars. Those tax dollars come from everyone and stay right here for public safety. And I think it's a great program and was well done at the onset. And so, I've always been a big proponent of, um, you know, the public safety. I would like to ask, um, from both fire and PD, i- if they have a preference on the duration. Because I know that staffing, you know, hiring staffing, you, ten years was good, but I, I'm leaning towards a longer term also. We've, we've proven, you guys have proven that it's been, uh, like, a good thing and, and you've done well. So, is a thirty, do you guys have a preference? I mean, you know, forever would probably be the preference, but, um, you know, thirty years would be a doable number that you guys could work within?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That's fair to that. So, I, I concur with, uh, my fellow council members. And, and I, I believe the, the earlier date, the June, the primary would be better than waiting, I believe. That's my own personal view.
Yeah, um, this is a very important subject tonight. Uh, my main concern is, like Lauren Stacy said, thirty years is gonna be harder to pass. You know, um, would the public vote on thirty years? They might, you know. Um, I know ten is probably more reasonable to the public. But, you know, we can look at thirty and, and s- you know, ask around and see what people are thinking. And, um, like Dave said, I, it's kudos to the, when Lauren Stacy, when you guys, I remember Sherman Dix came to my house, hey, Vince, I'm gonna put up a sign in your yard. Maybe, Pat, yeah, I'm, I'm all for Measure E, you know, back a long time ago, Councilmember Smith, uh, Dix, back then. But, but, but my, my main, my main concern is thirty years, just, people see thirty years, oh, it's a thirty-year tax, and how they're gonna react to it. So, that's just my concern.
Yeah, I, I think we all want it to be infinite. My, my only concern is how much are we willing to gamble, uh, with that thirty percent? And I think part of that answer is gonna really come down to, it's, it's our job to reach out to our constituents and see what the appetite is. 'Cause it's really, what's the public appetite? If they have the appetite for thirty years, that's great. If they have the appetite for no sunset, even better. But if it's gonna be a fifty-fifty shot with it, uh, going from a ten-year to a thirty-year, um, I just, I'm not a hundred percent there yet until I probably talk to more of the constituents. We want that for our PD, we want that for our fire, there's no doubt. But what's the, what's the gamble there? Our, you know, our number one objective is to get it passed. So, just wanna kind of reach out to people. You guys don't need any of that information yet, do you?
I think this evening, uh, if there's direction on the June, uh, election, which it sounds like there is, I think that's probably most important, because then that will line up, you know, as we engage a legal consultant, um, you know, then they can really set that timeline. And then we can start having more of these, uh, specific discussions. I mean, if the council desires to have workshops about the topic, or, you know, any of those things along the way, I think we can build those in. Um, and so, you know, but once we have the, the deadlines in mind, then we can kind of work backwards from there so that we can, um, you know, unpack any of these other items that, uh, the group wants to talk about. And I think, you know, before it goes on the ballot, then we can have more informational discussions, whether through workshops or, um, you know, different things to, to discuss, you know, what the measure has, has done and what would happen if we lost the measure. So, um, you know, I think that that for this evening, it's just, again, yeah, maybe you establish that, that, that date and gather any initial, uh, feedback, but certainly there'll be opportunity, or if things come up along the way, um, please, please contact staff about that.
Alex, can the consultant or the legal firm, do they do any, um, polling?
It's very expensive. That's, that's a big additional cost. I think we talked about that a little bit at the Finance Committee. I think we'd kind of leaned away from that because it was, it did pass with a substantial margin. Um, I think that that was, when we talked about it at Finance, that was our reason for getting away from that specific, because we're not looking to see if there's an appetite for police and fire. Everyone's gonna say yes. But if, if we can narrow that down at a reasonable cost, is that what you're, are you talking about polling specifically for the thirty-year versus ten-year versus no sunset?
Yes.
Yeah, is that something we can talk to them about, or?
It'd be a different, I think, you know, you'd have to use a different, uh, polling consultant. Um, you know, we discussed with, with the, with the group today. Um, you know, they kind of do, it's all encompassing where they do, they can do polling, you know, they can help with the marketing and outreach. And so, we're gonna have them kind of put together like a cafeteria option, you know, to show what that looks like. And so, that council can consider any of those things. And, um, you know, if, if polling is so desired, what that looks like and what you ask. So, um, that, that, there, there are firms that do that though, certainly.
My only word of caution with that is I think we've all seen recently in elections, polling don't necessarily end up being what it votes translate to. I would be a lot more comfortable, and I'm, again, I'm gonna lean on, I'm gonna lean on our labor groups here. I trust your guys going out there and having contact with these people. I trust your guys engaging with the community, uh, and talking to the people that are voters in this town to kind of get that appetite for us and, and come back to us. That's what we're really hoping for. Uh, do we have any public comment on this?
Chris, if you could, uh, state your name.
Ms. Peterson, resident. Do you want your children and grandchildren to have a safe police and fire environment in this town?
One hundred and ten percent.
Okay, that was partially a rhetorical question. But my point is, in thirty years, I'm looking around the room, a lot of us aren't gonna be here in thirty years. Some of you will, but with Canes and Walkers, but, um, others of us won't. So, you know, market it to the community, you know, your kids and grandkids. Think about that. That's an idea, it's not. And my other question is actually, I guess, to Alex is, um, you mentioned, and you gave an example, if someone bought a car and they lived in Kingsburg, then that one percent goes to Kingsburg. I want clarification, if you have it, on, let's say you live in either Fresno, Kings, or Tulare County, but you have a nine-three-six-three-one address. If you live in the county, does that one percent with the car come to Kingsburg?
No, it would only be if you reg- so, it's gonna be your address. So, it would have to be in the, you know, there's basically the district, which is our city limits, that's where the tax gets collected.
Is there any way to fix that so we can all be part of it?
Yeah, it'd be nice, right? Unfortunately not.
And, oh, my other thing is, I understand the cost of polling. Um, I think it's a rip-off, but, um, you may want to consider, and I forgot what exactly you called it, but you had those, um, you know, at the train station, those groups, you had, you know, open house community come and share their thoughts, that type of thing, you know, which is less formal. But you have pe- and you probably only have people that are truly, truly interested. But, you know, if you polled and got someone who wasn't that interested, what kind of answer would you get? You don't know. It's, it's a big question. But that's just another suggestion that, to get the pulse of the community. Because I know a lot of the comments at the Finance Committee meeting, y- you guys went through a whole litany of things. I mean, they were all, I felt, well thought out and, and concerns and, and, and that's kind of the right track. I don't remember everything, but I remember that they sounded good at the time. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Do you have any other members of the public that would like to speak to this? Okay, seeing none, we will come back to council. Is there any final discussion on this? Any more comments? Okay, seeing none. Do you have, staff have clear direction on that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, that is the completion of item eight. Uh, next is the future agenda items. Under that, we have none listed. Uh, so, we'll move on to the City Manager's report.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, a couple of items. Uh, so, as I reported previously, we submitted, um, uh, an amendment or an update to our, uh, to HCD on our housing element. Uh, we received a response late today. It wasn't, uh, an outright approval, so not exactly what we were hoping for. But, uh, there are some items that we will have to respond to. So, uh, staff is gonna get together, uh, to craft that response and, and possibly follow up with HCD. And then we will, uh, certainly inform the council, uh, when we have updates on that. But I wanted to let you know that. And then, as I discussed a little bit earlier, we are in the middle of, of budget preparation. So, uh, while there will be updates during the upcoming council meetings, uh, if there are projects or other requests, uh, from the council or from the community, uh, to please just, or that you hear about, please just pass them along so that we can incorporate them in, in our discussion, um, ultimately bring it to council for, for full consideration. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you. We'll move on to City Council member reports. We'll start with, uh, Council Member Silva.
Only one thing to report. Kingsburg Healthcare District meeting will be, uh, March twelfth. Um, that's the next week on Wednesday, and should be here in council chambers. So, um, other than that, uh, nothing to report.
Councilmember North?
A couple of different things. Um, Bid met here yesterday, and they had more discussion about the corners for Christmas and ordering way ahead of time. Um, they also are going to invite another social media influencer, um, during Swedish Festival, during Swedish Festival to come stay and advertise for us. It worked out well last time. And then, April twenty-fourth, um, they are gonna bring back Ladies Night Out, but they're gonna brand it a different way. And it's going to be Blossoms and Bridgerton. So, ladies should like that. Uh, April twenty-fourth downtown. And then, um, Chamber is next Tuesday. And then I also attended, um, FCRTA and COG, um, in place of Mayor Purcell last week. FCRTA really talked mostly about the parking lot that, um, Dave Peters talked about, where they're gonna have a microgrid over by, uh, Model Drug and Most Pepe's. And it was a one-point-five million dollar grant that they got and are using for Kingsburg, so that's exciting. COG, they really talked a lot about the One Voice, uh, when they go together and lobby our different elected officials in DC, and talking about the need to have local, um, electeds go on that trip. And our mayor went last year, correct?
Yeah, I, I met with them. I didn't go as part of the One Voice group. I went on my own for them.
Then the other thing they talked about is they are wanting each mayor to, um, appoint a citizen to a Measure C committee. And so, they'll be discussing that with Mayor Purcell in appointing someone on our behalf for that. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Um, the Finance Committee met, and we discussed Measure E. Um, and our next meeting is gonna be March twenty-fourth. Um, Community Service Commission met, and we got a dog park update with a reminder that the grand opening is April twelfth at ten AM. Um, there's, they're looking into a land and water conservation fund grant. Um, and they were looking for proposed community service projects to be working on. Um, and we will meet next month on March twenty-sixth.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, please.
Public safety, we have not met since our last meeting. Planning Commission scheduled to meet this month on the 13th. SKF, this morning I met with Chairman Buddy Mendez, we did an evaluation on plant manager Veronica Casaros, that went well, and then we're scheduled to meet, meeting with SKF in two weeks. And other than that, just want to announce, you guys know I coach wrestling at the high school, and we were Valley, Division II Valley champions for the boys' team two weeks ago. That tournament, the Valley tournament, was in Tulare at Mission Oak High School, so it's the first time we won Valley since 1997. It's hard to win a Valley championship, so we're happy to do that. And then also, the state tournament was this past weekend. We qualified five boys and two girls, and our 132-pounder Leo Macias, he's a senior, he was fourth in the state, and Carlos Melgoza, Jr., he was sixth in the state, and then a girl that I've been coaching since she was in fourth grade, Josie Benitez, I was lucky enough to, when she went to high school, the high school hired me as the head coach her freshman year, so been coaching her a long time, and she was back-to-back state medalist last year, sixth, this year she took fourth. So Josie, yeah, congrats to them. They've put a lot of hard work into their season, and brought home three state medals. That's hard to do for Kingsburg, so thank you on that, and that's all I have.
Awesome, thank you. From my report out, thank you to Councilmember North for doing COG and FCR TA. The only other thing is I'm trying to finalize some plans associated with that One Voice trip. I'm likely going back in May. I'll be back for a few days to try to do the same lobbying I did last year with our elected officials, so. Other than that, I have nothing else to report, as any other councilmen reports. Okay, we will conclude that, and we will adjourn tonight's City Council meeting. Thank you.